Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order from August the 5th, 2025. So, thank you all for being here tonight. So, first, Councilmember Vonderhar is going to start with the invocation. Will you all please stand?
I'm gonna stand. Okay, let us pray. Dear God, with a spirit of wisdom and compassion, we come together today in service to our community, a city of many voices, many traditions, and one shared home. We honor the faiths, beliefs, and values that shape our neighbors' lives, including those who walk with faith, as well as those who walk with principle. May our differences be a source of strength, and may our dialogue be guided by respect, patience, and understanding. Grant us the clarity to make decisions that serve the common good, the courage to act justly, and the humility to listen deeply. May we remember that leadership is a form of service, and that the trust placed in us is sacred. Let peace dwell among us, justice guide us, and compassion lead us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, we have Scouting America Troop 818 and 828 representatives. Will you all come on up? They're gonna do the pledges for us. So, we have Daniel Pinto and Nicole Pinto, and their troop is chartered in St. Lawrence Church, and they are here to attend a council meeting so they can earn a badge. So, anyway, so, start us with the pledge to the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Wanna get a photo? Give everybody a second picture? Wanna get a quick photo with us? Okay, I want to do this.
All right, count your guys down. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Next, we have a very, very special recognition. In fact, two different proclamations tonight in recognition of the Char House Centennial, which was absolutely phenomenal. So, why don't you all come on down here? We have got Carolyn Gilligan, the president, and we also have our Board of Directors, Bridget Young, Sandra Smith, Raymond Gomez, and Kristin Lidle. So, anyway, Carolyn, I'm just gonna let you say a few words about our wonderful Char House, and I say we greatly, greatly appreciate you all taking on this role of hosting the centennial celebration.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm proud that our centennial celebration for the 100th anniversary of the Char House and the water tower went well. As many of you know, the Char House was actually finished in 1925, and because the Char House was so high, they had to build the water tower even higher. It was also finished in 1925 and supplied the Char House with water fire protection and the water supply for the company town. And we had a wonderful time working on the centennial, and it was a very good success. We had a wonderful turnout.
Now, I'd like to present this proclamation to the Sugar Land Heritage Foundation. So, whereas the Sugar Land Heritage Foundation was formed after the 2003 closure of the Imperial Sugar Refinery, which housed a vast number of artifacts, documents, and photographs that traced the evolution of the site from its early days into its more modern era as a company town, and whereas incorporated as a 501(c)(3) organization in March 2008, the Heritage Foundation's mission is to research, collect, preserve, and communicate the history, cultures, and values of the Sugar Land community to help guide the community for the future. And whereas, on July the 13th, 2025, the Heritage Foundation held the Imperial Char House and Water Tower Centennial Celebration, a community event marking 100 years of Sugar Land's most iconic historic structures, and whereas the Foundation's board members' hard work and tireless efforts in planning made the event a success in bringing together community members, event sponsors, and volunteers to celebrate 100 years of history, community, and heritage. So, again, congratulations, and thank you all for your hard work. So, I have one more proclamation, and then after that, then we'll just have the whole council come down for pictures, and we'll do the official, hand it off then. Okay, so, the second proclamation is for the Queen of the Imperial Sugar Land Centennial Celebration, Kristin Lidle.
Do not let me talk. You don't want me to talk.
Okay, okay. So, whereas the City of Sugar Land proudly acknowledges individuals whose dedication and leadership contribute meaningful to the enrichment of our community, and whereas Kristin Lidle has demonstrated exceptional leadership in orchestrating the centennial celebration held on July 13th, 2025 at Taliard Brewing Company commemorating 100 years of the Char House and the Water Tower, two historic icons of Sugar Land, and whereas through tireless effort over the past year, Kristin secured generous sponsorships and meticulously planned an event that united community leaders, local businesses, and residents in a memorable celebration of Sugar Land's rich history and bright future. And whereas, for inspiring dedication, vision, and commitment reflect the spirit of community and pride that define Sugar Land. So, thank you so much, Kristin. So, council, come on down for some pictures here. Thank you, everybody. Okay, now, next is public comment. So, at this time, we'll open public comment for non-public hearing items. So, citizens who desire to address the City Council with regard to actions on the agenda for consideration will have three minutes to speak. Lynda, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? Okay, the public comment is closed. Next, Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda. So, all consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion unless there's a City Council member who wishes to pull an item off of consent. Anyone? Wow, that's efficient. Okay. Okay, motion to approve by Watley, second by Betcher. Okay, let's vote at this time. Okay, and it passes unanimously, 7-0. Next is Item 8A, Acceptance of Monetary Donations. Consideration of and action on acceptance of monetary donations in the amount of $2,158 for adoption efforts and animal welfare, community education efforts for the animal shelter. We have Melissa Hobson, Animal Services Manager. Oh, well, actually, we have Mark. I just looked up. We've got Mark, Grotz instead.
Mayor of City Council, good evening. I'm standing in for Melissa, who had a family emergency. My name is Mark Grotis. I'm a deputy administrator of Animal Services. And so, we're here to consider donations that are received throughout the year from residents, non-residents, and businesses. City policy requires that monetary donations be formally accepted by the City Council. The animal shelter has received 17 donations for a total amount of $2,158 since the last acceptance of donations by City Council in April of 2025. We had one donation over $250 from Subaru Loves Pets Events for $1,000. So, our recommendation is that Animal Services, that City Council accept donations in the amount of $2158 to the Animal Shelter Donations Fund.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, motion by Single, second by Vonderhar. Let's vote at this time. There we go. And it passes 7-0. Great, thank you to all of the donors. Next is Item 9A, Public Hearing. An Authorization of a Water Well Drilling Permit Application with Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 17. So, receive and hear all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed water well drilling permit application with Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 17 for the replacement of well 1251. Consideration of and action on authorization. Ooh, that's on there twice. So, anyway, we have Margo Watson, Water Resources Manager. So, at this time, I'd like to open the public. Oh, sorry, so, just open that up to the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As tradition, I'd like to introduce an employee who has not presented to you before. This is Margo Watson. She's our Water Resource Manager in the Utilities Department. She's a graduate of Texas Tech and has been with us just shy of a year now, presenting or representing the city in all things water supply related with the Subsidance District, as well as Gulf Coast Water Authority. So, I'm excited to present her this evening as she walks us through this public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to seek approval for the Fort Bend Levy Improvement District Number 17 to drill a replacement well. As part of this process, we have to get approval, and we must have a public hearing, which the mayor ended up describing earlier, which we will do after this presentation, and the approval also requires council action. So, just to briefly go over what I'm gonna talk about today in this presentation, I will lay out the groundwater regulations, the review process for approval. I will also talk about this particular well and how it fits into our groundwater reduction plan and the Subsidance District compliance with their regulations, and then finally, an overview of the permit requests submitted by LID 17. So, the groundwater regulations are set by the Fort Bend Subsidance District. This is an entity that was created by the Texas State Legislature with the task to minimize subsidence. In 2014, the city had to meet requirements of 70% groundwater, 30% alternative sources or non-groundwater. The city has proactively planned for these regulations through implementing our groundwater reduction plan and adopting our Integrated Water Resources Plan in 2019. With that being said, from time to time, wells fail within our GRP, and they need to be replaced. So, next, I will discuss the process for approving well drilling permits. So, the city has an ordinance that prohibits drilling of wells, but there are exceptions that allow for drilling. These exceptions require council action. This is a routine practice as wells fail, and City Council can approve drilling of the well when other sources of water are either impractical or if it's a replacement well. And as a part of this approval process, LID 17 must submit a water well drilling permit application along with the documentation you see listed on that slide. So, how does LID 17 fit into our GRP? Let me give you a quick background on our GRP or Groundwater Reduction Plan. It outlines our strategies for meeting the Fort Bend Subsidance District groundwater conversion timeline. The city is the administrator. It is a conglomerate of 18 participants totaling up to 76 wells. This does include the 25 wells that the city owns, and other participants can end up being HOAs, golf courses, POAs, or even commercial. And just to kind of give you some perspective as to how much groundwater the total GRP uses, last year, we used about 5.5 billion gallons. And then, all of the participants do pay into the system utility fund, which is then used to pay costs associated with the GRP. So, LID 17 is one of those 18 GRP participants. The LID owns two wells. They are in separate locations. The well that we are proposing tonight for them to have a replacement drilling application approved is well number 1251. That well failed due to a large hole in their screen. Now, primarily, they do use raw water off of Oyster Creek to fill their lake system and to irrigate with. These wells are used as a supplement to the raw water, and it's strictly just to make sure that their lake levels can be maintained properly. And like I mentioned before, the well did fail due to a large hole in the screen. So, kind of just to give you some key highlights and key points of the permit application, this is a replacement well. The new well that will be drilled is the exact same size, exact same diameter, depth, everything. They've already obtained approval from Fort Bend Subsidance District on June 25th to get approval to drill that well. Other sources are not feasible for this well, and like I mentioned, they're already using raw water, and it will not impact the GRP adversely in any way, and it will not increase their total aggregate amount of groundwater that they use, meaning the two wells that they own, adding those together, that's what we mean by aggregate. And most of many lakes in Sugar Land are actually filled with groundwater, but this participant is able to utilize raw water majority of the time. So, sometimes, they do end up needing a backup well just to make sure that if we take the raw water pump station that the city does own and operate offline, that they're able to maintain their lake levels. And with that being said, utility staff recommends the City Council authorize the approval of the water well drilling permit to replace existing well number 1251 as submitted by the Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 17.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Lynda, do we have anyone who's filled out a request to comment card?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, do we have anyone else who hasn't filled out a card who would like to comment? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. So, move on to consideration of and action on authorization of a water well drilling permit application with Fort Bend County Levy Improvement District Number 17 for the replacement of well 1251. If you have any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Single?
What happens with the old well? Do they plug and abandon it?
Yes, they do plug it. They plug it accordance to TCQ standards. They will send us the copy of the plugging report, and we will have that on file, and the Subsidance District also receives a copy of that report as well.
Councilmember Miller? Okay. Any more comments? Okay, so, we have a motion from Councilmember Miller. Okay, a second from Watley. Let's vote at this time. Okay, and the motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Margo.
Thank you.
Next is Item Number 10A, Contract with Half Associates, Inc. Consideration of and action on authorization of a contract with Half Associates, Inc. in the amount of $512,513 for design services for the Windmill Drainage Modifications Project, CIP, CDR 2504. And we have Robert Wilson, Assistant City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. So, tonight, we have a contract for Half Associates for a design phase for windmill drainage modifications in front of you. Some background on the project, there was a drainage study that was completed in 2018 for the Austin Park, Settlers Grove, and Chimney Stone areas that was post Hurricane Harvey. There were some structural flooding in the area, and the city studied possible drainage modifications for that. With that study, there were some alternatives that came out of that, and the solution that was selected was Phase 1, which is the Austin Park Chimney Stone Drainage Channel, which is under construction currently. It's anticipated to be complete at the end of this month. And then, Phase 2 includes some neighborhood storm connections to the Chimney Stone Drainage Channel. One of those is in front of you tonight. So, on the screen here, we have the blue line, which is the map or the layout for the Phase 1 channel, and Phase 2 piece of the windmill drainage modifications is the purple line here for the connection to that blue channel. Project scope is to remove and replace storm sewers with larger pipes, install larger inlets and manholes, interconnect the existing and proposed storm drainage from the windmill area into that channel, constructing a new outfall into the channel, and then associated concrete pavement replacement with the storm pipes. Consultant selection, we followed policy PU 109. We received and evaluated ranked 22 submittals through an open RFQ process. Staff interviewed top six ranked teams, or firms. The selection committee was composed of engineering and public work staff, and we selected Half Associates due to their extensive drainage study and design experience, and half has successfully delivered city projects in the past. Part of their design scope includes project management coordination, 30, 60, 90, and final design submittals, bid phase services, and then additional services such as surveying, mapping, geotechnical, H&amp;H analysis, and traffic control. Public and stakeholder engagement throughout the design, we plan to coordinate with HOAs, Fort Bend Levy District Number 2, and Fort Bend ISD throughout the project to make sure we mitigate any impacts prior to getting into construction phase. Project funding and schedule, there's available funds in CIP, CDR 2504 in the amount of $775,000. This professional services contract is in the amount of $512,513. We anticipate a notice to proceed to be issued this month with design completed in March of '26, and construction anticipated to start in June of '26, lasting approximately one year. With that, we would request the authorization of the execution of professional services design contract with Half Associates for the Windmill Drainage Modifications Project, CIP, CDR 2504 in the amount of $512,513. And any questions?
Have any questions? Councilmember Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. As this is in District 3, the number-one district, the economic engine of the City of Sugar Land, and I am the lucky council member from that district, I move to approve.
Well, you can go ahead. You can go ahead. Councilmember Betcher?
Just wondering from a scope of the project, can you go back to your slide with all the deliverables for this project? I'm just curious, from the design standpoint, how much is pre-existing that we're just replacing with what already is there versus how much is new design and development for this project?
So, this project is mostly increasing storm pipes. So, we're not leaving existing. It's going to be increasing in size, a lot of it in relation to those flows that we saw during Harvey, trying to mitigate any potential structural flooding.
So I see the budget for this project, CIP, is $775,000. So with 514 gone in design, you think there's enough money left for construction?
So there's an additional, that's in the design phase, there's additional money that is proposed in the '26 budget for 5.3 million roughly for construction.
So this budget was only for design?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, so a motion by Jacobson, second by Watley. Let's vote at this time. And the motion passes 7-0. Next is Item 10B, Contract with Sequel Data Systems, Inc. Consideration of and action on authorization of a contract with Sequel Data Systems, Inc. in the amount of $143,800 for Cisco XDR Cyber Security Services. We have Steve Bundy, Director of IT, Data, and Security.
Good evening, mayor and council. Excuse me. Cybersecurity is the practice of protecting systems, networks, applications, and data from digital attacks, unauthorized access, damage, or theft. The city of Sugar Land maintains a high level of threat protection and mitigation by using multiple layers of technology and services. This particular product is extended detection and response, aggregates data from the multiple layers of security and other data sources. It analyzes the data for threats using behavioral analytics and, sorry, thank you, and real-time intelligence. It triggers rapid response to any detected threats through automation and alerts, and it also provides 24/7/365 monitoring and incident response services. Grant dollars are being applied to an existing service already contracted to Sequel Data Systems. We already have this in place. The XDR service will be expanded and enhanced with a one-time payment of the grant funds, and this completes a multi-year grant-funded effort to enhance our cybersecurity program. The state, this is a little information about the grant itself, the state and local cybersecurity grant program is part of the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act established by Congress in 2021. It allocates $1 billion nationwide from 2022 to 2025 to help state, local, and tribal governments mitigate cybersecurity risks in public and in public systems. And with that, staff recommends that city council approve the contract with Sequel Data Solutions in the amount of $143,800 purchased under the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, DIR CPO 5347 for Cisco XDR Services. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilmembers, yeah, council. Okay, any other? Yes, Councilmember Jacobson?
Steve, do I understand that this entire project is paid for with grant money?
There's a 10% match on this particular piece of the 163 or the 143.
Really?
The other two, there's other grant monies that were applied. Those were 100%. So there was no match needed.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Singal, second by Councilmember Miller. Let's vote at this time. And the motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is city council and city manager reports. We'll start with Councilmember Betcher.
All right, this past week, we've hosted the plug-and-play as well as the faculty members from University of Houston from both the Sugar Land locations, so members from the Engineering School and the Business School. So we're collaborating to look for economic opportunity within Sugar Land.
Councilmember Jacobson?
I forgot to make a list. Sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Vandehaar? Councilmember Watley?
That is not going down the line, mayor. I have no report, but thank you.
I'm just changing it up tonight. Councilmember Singal?
Yeah, so I attended a meeting of new territory HOA, and the meeting was focused on public safety, pedestrian safety especially, and mayor, you attended it. Some of the city officials attended. I think it was a very useful meeting. Some action item came out of it, which we are working to address. Thank you.
Mayor, I had the privilege of going to Betty McCrowan's retirement ceremony and reception. It was a great event, representing you and the city. And then Margo and I hosted the Bravo's River Authority at a Space Cowboys game. It was great. Those people are fantastic.
Okay, thank you. And I gave a presentation to the Indo-American Chamber of Commerce as part of their Power Dialogue Series on Economic Development here in Sugar Land, and I, well, most of us attended the Fort Bend Mayor and Council Dinner on the Fort Bend Subsidance District, and I gave a proclamation at the Golden Jubilee Celebration of the Anjali Center, which is the oldest dance studio here, oldest Indian dance institute here in Texas. So city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to invite the public out. This Thursday morning at 7:30, we start our budget hearings, and we'll be doing that for the next month and have an action-packed agenda for that, and plus the setting of the tax rate coming up next month, the proposed tax rate. So please pay attention, and we'd love to hear from you. Thank you, mayor.
Next item is 12A, Closed Executive Session. So the closed executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551.074, public officers, for the purpose of deliberations regarding appointments to and duties of the Building Standards Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Zoning Board of Adjustment. So at this time, we'll adjourn the regular meeting, and council will go into the council dining room for the closed meeting. Thank you all for coming.